Of the Monday, January 6, 2014. Meeting and public hearing of the Falls Church Planning Commission. Ms. G., would you please call the roll?
Mr. John?
Present.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Ms. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Thank you.
I'd like a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please.
To move.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is adopted as presented. There's no one in the audience for petitions, so we'll move on to old business. And we have no old business on our calendar because we're not going to consider that amendment issue. We'll move on to new business. And Mr. Snyder, I think you have to take over here for the election of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, do we have nominations for the Chair of the Planning Commission for 2014?
I nominate Ruth Rogers for Chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Teetz and a second by Mr. Meeks, or was it?
That's okay. He can stop.
For Ruth Rogers to be Chair of the Planning Commission for 2014. Do we have any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Ms. G.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, commissioners.
Looking forward to having you lead us onward.
Congratulations. Next order of business. Next order of business is election of Planning Commission Vice Chair for 2014. Do we have any nominations for Vice Chair of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Snyder, I'd like to nominate Rob Meeks for the Vice Chair.
I'll second.
We have a nomination by Ms. Rogers for Rob Meeks to be Vice Chair, seconded by Mr. Wodisca. Are there any other nominations at this time? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Teetz?
Ms. Teetz, yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Teetz.
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Mr. Hockenberry?
Mr. Hockenberry!
I'm sorry.
Yes, absolutely.
I will vote.
Madam Chair, we'll turn the meeting over to you at this time.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to remind the commission that this is a serious business meeting. Please control yourselves. We'll move on to appointments of Planning Commissioners as liaison to boards and commissions. We have a list here of boards and commissions that need to be appointed to.
I'm happy with mine if anybody wants to fight me for them.
Yeah, I could say the same. I don't know, does anyone want to move off of anything?
I-
Yes, I'd like to move off of the Historic-
Historic Commission?
Yeah, because I have a conflict.
Okay.
Do they meet now?
I have no idea.
No, I'm happy to-
Maybe we should check with them to see if they do meet.
They have not had a quorum.
Okay.
All right, so we won't appoint anyone until they start meeting?
Our staff liaison for both the Harb and the Historical Commission. And because council has not appointed anybody to the vacancies, we use a quorum of the existing members rather than the full complement.
And do they meet?
They do, on the fourth Thursday of the month. And they alternate times, either 7:00 PM or 8:00 PM.
They meet the same day as the Harb.
Right.
Right, so the Historic Commission should be the fourth Tuesday, not the third.
Okay. On the Economic Development Authority, Melissa, did you want to stay on there?
I can't always-
You can't always make it?
I can't always make it. I've been not doing so well, but I wanted to try a little bit harder this year.
I know, but it's no fun without you.
I know, I will try harder. I actually had a soccer issue with a child last year, but the soccer's going to be Wednesday now, so that'll be better.
Okay, and I would like to appoint to the EDC, or the council's Economic Development Committee, Rob Meeks. Mr. Meeks has expressed much interest in the EDC.
And I bet they'll be happy to have him.
They should be happy to have him. Andy, of course, you know that you can go anytime you want. You know that.
Public meetings.
Lyndi, Housing Commission, you want to stay?
I want to stay.
Okay. And Rob, you've also expressed for the pedestrian. So we've got the Planning Commission rules of procedure, that's kind of the tree commission. Lyndi, you were on that?
Yep.
Okay. The Stormwater Task Force, which I have been appointed to, I think is over. We're ready to give our report. I don't know if they've done that yet, I don't think they have, but- And Russ, I don't know if your committee, the advisory committee, is still meeting or not, but if they do, if they do-
Yeah, if it comes back to life, I'm happy to.
Okay, good.
I'm sorry, I missed part of the beginning. So Wreckin Parks is Rob, thank you. AAB is Guoffo. Yes.
I think you should announce, we start at six o'clock, so it doesn't seem like we're-
Lyndi is going to stay on the Arts and Cultural Committee. And Russ is going to stay on the CACT. And Rob and I are going to be on the EDC. And Economic is Melissa.
And Lyndi.
And Lyndi.
And Meeks on the Historical Commission.
Sure.
What are you going to be on now?
Historical Commission, I don't think they're meeting.
Because they don't meet, I can't-
Well, so I went in a year, I think they had two meetings, I missed one, I went to one.
All right.
Is that right?
Andy will do that one. Okay, Mr. Rankin is going to do that one.
He lives in a historic house.
That's right.
It is.
Thank you. Okay.
My kid's mine, that kid's mine.
It's only $150,005.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the annual report, which we reviewed in our work session. I have just a couple of minor edits. One of them is where we're calling it the City Center Plan, we're now calling it the Downtown Plan. That's on 250 and 264. And what I wanted to ask is, when there's a vote of 6:0 to 1, is the 1 absent, or is the 1 abstained?
The final number is absent.
Are there any other comments on this before we move to approve? Is there a motion to approve this annual report?
I say move.
And I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the annual report. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The annual report to City Council is approved.
Is there a Planning Commissioner who would like to present this to council? I mean, it could go in their package ahead of time, but if you'd like to speak to council directly about this?
When would it be coming up?
Well, tonight, you've approved it, so the next time council meets.
You will have a work session with council on the 21st, I mean, on Tuesday.
I think I did it last year, so-
Yeah, you did. I could do it again.
Usually you do it at a public meeting during the, at the beginning, and you get longer time because you're-
So on the 13th? Okay, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. Excuse, I'm so sorry. For the 16th.
Madam Chair, I may just have a small point of clarification. I may have some other business. It seems to me that in a formal way, we should address, as a Planning Commission, the noxious motion passed by the school board that totally bifurcates the role that the Planning Commission serves in the city of Falls Church. And I wonder if any of my fellow Planning Commissioners have any comments?
Would you explain, would you-
The matter in question, the George Mason parcel, which the City Council or the school board was good enough to decide via motion among themselves, and I don't believe any actual legal authority, that they were going to take over the planning process for. I think that it's best that we be given, let's say, 120 days to complete the preliminary small area plan and perhaps get some public input before that, let's call it splinter group that's formed by the school board starts. Maybe that might be a way to start.
That's a good way of going. I do think they can say that they're going to take over the planning process, or that they're going to be the primary planners, but in the end, they still need their plans to go through city staff and their site plan to be approved by the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission does have to set up that zoning and everything that's in that area. So it's like they're making a statement that doesn't have any logic to it because they can't convol- they cannot go around what it has to be. It has to be an application, it has to go through staff, it has to go through the Planning Commission, and we have to approve the site plan. So I, when I saw that, I was, it didn't, I thought, okay, fine, plan as you want, but they still have to go through the public process.
Does anyone, we don't have it in front of us, but do, and I didn't read it carefully, and it was over the holidays, but are they asking for the former group of people to plan the whole area? Or are they talking about planning the school facilities that will be up there? Because one of the things you guys often comment is that the schools don't plan their school facilities enough.
It's the whole area.
The whole areas of it.
Yes, it's the whole area. I think that's the intention of that breakaway group.
Maybe I'll try to look it up.
I would mention, we did have a briefing of the superintendent and some of their staff, and did make sure everyone understood, and I believe they do, that basically these properties, as they come into the city as a result of the action to sell the water company and agree with Fairfax County, come to the city without planning or zoning.
Right.
They do come to us with a restriction on the amount of property that can be used for commercial development, and the percentage that has to be used for educational development. And I think they clearly understand that there will be, there has to be an action by City Council and the Planning Commission to plan and zone the areas. In other words, they have to be included in the comprehensive plan per state law, they have to be zoned appropriately. And then ultimately, based on the zoning ordinance, there will have to be development plans approved. So I think there is an understanding of that. It may not have come through clearly in what we've seen so far, but I think if we have a meeting to discuss this, we can make that more clear. I have given a briefing to them as to some thoughts we have about, as we talked about in our work session, including this as a new opportunity area for the city, and then coming up with some planning options in terms of land use plan and zoning patterns. And those are the basics that would have to take place. And then, of course, there'd be a more involved process to solicit development plans and figure out what the educational program would be. So it's a, there'll need to be a partnership effort, but we've made it very clear, the city manager and myself and others, that there will be, you know, there has to be involvement by the Planning Commission and City Council per Virginia state law, and that that'll be a very important part of the process, and ultimately, the development plan will be approved by-
But I tend to agree, I tend to agree with Rob that just one person on there is, I mean, this is one of the most important things we, you know, to have annexation of land.
I did suggest to city manager that there should be, that would be very important to have at least two Planning Commissioners on the committee, and of course, the commission as a whole will have to consider in a vote any planning or zoning action. So ultimately, this group empowered by state law and the city charter will have to make decisions as a group.
I'm surprised, as really the author and the champion of these small area plans, you wouldn't want to go through some of that public process with the Planning Commission and before this goes to this extra legal group, that is mostly the City Council.
Well, I think we do need to do some of that work, and I believe we gave a quick briefing to you all about some of the ideas, but would be happy to have a work session with the commission to get your ideas and reactions to some of our preliminary thinking. I haven't had other discussions with this group, so I don't know much more about it than you do, other than what I read in the paper. But I did want to make clear, we've made it real clear that by state law, city charter, these actions have to be taken by the Planning Commission and City Council regardless of any other committee.
And I certainly think that we understand that. I think my concern is there are certain issues, and in the interest of time, we don't have to go through each one ad nauseam, but there are certain issues, let's, for example, take the issue of density, that I really feel like those are small area plan, Planning Commission issues that go out beyond 50 years, beyond, that transcend sort of the nature, the immediate needs of the school for facilities. So I think that's issue one. Issue two, I think that this is a much longer process than the City Council appreciates. I think that if Ruth and I were discussing before the meeting Gonzaga, which is, would sort of be the ultimate case study, and I think it would be great for us to take a field trip down and see Gonzaga and 77H and all the buildings that were developed on that campus, very urban site. That was probably a 12-year process, and it's still not finished. They still have not done sort of what is the next phase, which will take at least another 36 months. So I think this is a much longer process just with regard to density. Secondly, if you look, for example, at use, this legitimately is an opportunity to have a use like an office building which has been batted around for 20-plus years. We are well within the GSA requirements of walkability to metro station closer than a quarter of a mile. This may be our best opportunity for a big office campus that has been, headquarters building that's been talked about, gosh, for literally since the first Virginia Towers-
Absolutely.
-weren't built in the city. And I'm not sure that that's really going to be driven by a school board commission with two Planning Commissioners. My suggestion would be, if we're all excited for the school board to be the leader on this, that's fine, but I would suggest a minimum of seven Planning Commissioners.
I don't want to come, you know, down as, probably as hard as I would like to. But I think that we've had experience with, you know, I think we really, really need to have this cooperatively. And, you know, we've kind of been on the edge of that right straight along. And I think we've got to be very, very much a full partner in this. And it's absolutely one of the most important things we're going to be doing, looking at that George Mason site. And it cannot be put totally into school board hands.
I agree with Mr. Meeks that the primary role for planning and zoning of this is the Planning Commission and City Council. That's by charter, by state law. So the council and the commission working together are the folks who will plan the area. Certainly will be input from the schools in terms of the ownership and the need for new facilities. And of course, the agreement with Fairfax County contemplates major redevelopment or the potential for major redevelopment on a good portion of the property. And I would be very happy to have a work session with this group and get your thoughts on some preliminary ideas we have, particularly with regard to density and flexibility. And I think some field trips to see key projects would be very much in order. Another project that's, doesn't have a commercial component but is a new high school that's worth seeing is Wakefield High School, recently opened, replacement of an existing school on an existing campus. Very nicely done.
And joint field trips.
So we can learn from others, I think. Going to some of those places would be important.
Jim, is the committee that Rob has mentioned, that actually hasn't been formed yet, is that correct? And it's not certain that it's going to go forward, or is it certain that it's going to go forward?
I don't know. I believe they were sending it to City Council and were asking for council reaction to it. I'm not privy to what's happened on that at this point. I mean, council was meeting tonight-
Right.
-forming their own organizational meeting. So I'm sure we'll be in discussion with the manager and this group and council about how we proceed ahead. Certainly legally, Planning Commission and City Council, the folks who plan and zone in the city, and ultimately will vote on any development that happens there.
Yeah, my one thought is, unlike some of the other areas that we've planned and planned to plan, you know, the schools, I think, anticipate needing to build a new high school on a timeframe that's, you know, I assume they'll come up with a specific timeframe when CIP time comes around. So I wonder how that affects the planning process in the sense that they may need to get going on a school and so therefore have some sense for how that fits into a plan versus the other approach that we generally take, which is this kind of more like theoretical, you know, this could happen here. And I wonder how that, not specifically so much to this committee, but if that has an impact on how we approach this area plan as opposed to other areas.
Well, I don't think we're going to dilly-dally on this, if that's your point. I would suggest to you something that always makes me nervous in every aspect of life. Whenever anyone says to me, "We gotta act now, we gotta do this today," I'm always nervous. You know, I got my hand on my wallet. And I would suggest to you that the mistakes maybe that the city have made in the past, Ruth and I were discussing the old Falls Church High School site off of Hillwood. I mean, that, you know, part of that was, "We've got to act now." You know, if we'd awaited a year, the development would have looked very different, and I think probably more to the city's benefit. But it was that feeling that, you know, we are in this crushing hurry that gets us into trouble.
And the tech center, too.
And the tech center.
Melissa?
I was just going to say, I think this is a difficult situation in a way because whatever we do plan for that parcel, it's really going to be based on where that high school's located. I mean, my assumption is that, from what I've heard the school board say, is that they do want it wholly rebuilt and it's going to be at the back of the lot. But there are some of the plans that show us using part of the current building, and that leaves it where it is. And what kind of development we have is going to be based on what kind of frontage it has, what kind of public access it has. So there's a lot of key issues there, but I think that for us, we obviously should try to get a work session on that parcel as soon as possible. I think that the downtown plan is kind of moving along, and we've already given comments several times on that one. So I think we could try to jump into trying to do a work session pretty soon on the parcel. And maybe we just have to be kind of flexible and sketch out several different, you know, opportunities that allows them. Because if you read the big facility study that was done, I don't know, when was that task? I was, yeah, I was on that task force, but it seems like forever ago. So it was like, yeah, like six years ago now, almost six years. There were multiple options in there, so we could kind of use it as a template for the different options of where that high school could be. I mean, we know where MEH is going to be. And so, you know, I think the thing, all we can do is move forward and plan as carefully as we can plan and give the school board the best tools we can provide them in terms of what would be the best location for the different components. And, you know, nothing will go forward, nothing happens until we get to an application phase and we work through a site plan.
I'm not as optimistic that nothing will happen. I think that's maybe where we disagree. I envision something coming in with the intention of being more baked than I think it will be. But secondly, you know, it's possible to do, it's very possible to do a small area plan. Certainly, the work that Mr. Snyder did in the Roz and Boston corridor and some of the other areas, you know, there weren't specific buildings. This building has to be here and painted blue, and it's got to be like this. It's, I don't think that, I think it'd be possible to small area plan this. I think it would be possible to do a lot of good work. I think it would be possible to get a lot of city input, a lot of public input into this in a short period of time that does not detract from the process and doesn't stop the building of a first-class facility. And the notion that somehow we're stopping the process, I just, I don't think that's true. In fact, I think we're doing the opposite.
Yeah, and I would just say, just like you hold your wallet and you say, "We've got to hurry up," when someone says, "I think we have a lot of public input meetings and still make it happen pretty quick," that's insane. It's not going to happen quick if you have a lot of public input. So I think what the schools are probably thinking is, they're thinking, hey, we need a new high school, it's going to be a big community effort, what is an efficient way to do it? I'm not necessarily, I don't think that's necessarily an efficient way to do it, but even if we do the area plan the way we normally do the area plan, the school's going to be doing some sort of planning from their component of it. So we need to figure out a way to do that fairly efficiently. And we'll have all the public means we always have, but we've got to try to not let it get derailed by-
The small area planning idea, and I defer to Mr. Snyder on this, generally speaking, but isn't to say, I mean, for one thing, it's the amount of density.
Well, and I think this is, that's sort of my thing, is this is different than most small area plans. Most small area plans are planning for an area that already has a bunch of stuff built on it that's controlled by a bunch of different people with a bunch of different potential goals and dreams in life. This area has one user, one owner, and a lot of potential. So I think, I think we use the same fundamental approach, but it's going to be very different than how we plan anything else.
Well, sort of. I mean, it, it's not one owner, it's 12,600 owners. The, so if you just take an issue, if you take, for example, one of the issues, which is the amount of use, would we want 1,500 residential units there? Or would we want to wait for more commercial development because of its proximity to metro?
And that's where, my guess is the schools don't necessarily want to dictate that, but they want to make sure the plan happens in a timeframe so they can build a new high school.
I wish I felt that that were true.
You think they have specific goals of residence that they have? Why would they?
Because you could, this property is immediately saleable as a residential site.
I'm saying, why, what's in it for them?
I don't think our deal with Fairfax County, that was for it to become commercial. What do we, are we even allowed to sell it as residential? Because the word, all the word in I ever saw was up to 30% could be used for commercial. Because we built residence, residences are built on them, those are going on Fairfax County schools, and I'm not sure that-
No, they're not. It's part of the city now.
Oh, you're right, it is part of the city now.
And, you know, it could be, it could be commercial on the first floor and-
I don't know, that's a good point.
One concept we've thought about, one concept we've thought about, because of the short-term and long-term potential and the need to provide some control, is to look at the possibility, one option could be to zone the property, for example, B2, which allows public buildings, schools, et cetera, also allows commercial development, but allows residential development through the special use process, special exception process. It also gives us the most flexibility for height and density without mandating great height or great density. So it provides a lot of flexibility, and it's an existing, it's an existing pattern. We would have to note, I think the agreement as a part of the comprehensive plan with Fairfax County is to the limitations on the proportion of the property. So it might be able to be planned in a striping pattern of public or green and business. But there are several options which we'd love to go over with you all in the work session and get some thinking on the broad planning concepts. And then, of course, there are design and other issues that need to be worked on in terms of how does it relate to the city, how does it relate to its adjoining commercial and residential neighbors? Are there design ideas or connectivity ideas that we have? And so I think, you know, a work session to sketch some of those out would be very helpful. I think it could be done in a relatively quick timeframe if we keep things general, general principles. And then let- And then let the project evolve in terms of, I don't know if they're going to be asking for requests for information or requests for proposals, then you could evaluate various projects or people proposing different ideas based on the general guidance of the plan.
Well, and I would think if we had some general principles that would inform a request for information, that would inform some of this stuff as we go forward, I don't think we're adding a lot of time to the process. And I, I don't, again, I don't feel like that's delaying anything.
And frankly, we have been working on some of that and we did, we have, you know, sketched out some ideas. Not saying one is the absolute answer, but we've been working in, in anticipation of the need to move quickly with some ideas we'd love to share with you and get your reactions.
I also think that we really need to be careful here and make sure we do have some public input pretty early in. I'd like hopefully maybe sometime in February about what the possible commercial or commercial, I, I, I've always heard the word "commercial," so I never really thought of residential there, but maybe, you know, that's something I need to think about. But what that would look like on the campus, what the ingress and egress would look like. Because I do, what I do hear is that, just like with the Catholic school, there is a little bit of concern about what kind of development we would have next to our middle school, next to our high school. What, would the traffic be like, would it make it harder for students to cross? So I think somewhere early in there, if, if the school board with their task force isn't looking at doing something fairly, you know, we need to be looking at that, because those are the questions we have to deal with on the site plan, is safety and how it interacts with our community. And I, we need to start getting that public input really early in, because I would hate for us to develop this plan and have the schools start to develop their high school based on this plan and have people, you know, the, the 12,000 so owners not be happy with what we're doing.
Well, so that, you said it exactly, we are going to develop this plan. However, the "we" aren't actually part of the committee, we, I think, have one token member, which is why I would suggest if that's the committee that's going to be "we," it have seven planning commissioners.
Well, I guess my, my thing is, they can't really plan anything that doesn't fit whatever we end up with in terms of an area plan there, because we're going to determine the zoning. No, no, I mean, they can try, they can, they can go around it. They can plan anything they want, but let me just say, they cannot be, have a successful plan.
I'm not sure they can form the committee, that they passed a resolution that formed, so...
Well, and, and I guess that's my thing, Rob, is what, I know what's, I know how things work in the city. I know we have to approve a site plan, I know staff has to look at any thing that they put in. And I think we should move forward deliberately the way we're supposed to plan it properly, have the public means we're supposed to have and have, you know, and, and I think there should be more than one planning commissioner on this task force, but that person should be going back and say, "Okay, this is what we're looking at, so you guys make sure what you're doing works within this framework."
I think one of...
That, that's, I mean, I, I think we should just look at it as this is how it's supposed to work and this is what you guys need to do if you want a site plan that gets approved.
You know, I think the other thing we also need to consider is the fact that they will be looking at some type of commercial development to help pay for this and what order is going to happen in there and, you know, and, and all that kind of thing. Because I think that's one of the huge thoughts out there is that this commercial development up there will help pay for the school. Now whether people are willing to float for the school first and then follow along with the commercial, you know, all that is, and certainly do we want to build a new school and keep the old one and then tear it down, all this kind of stuff.
So Jim, when is your timeframe for looking at these area plans that you were talking about?
Well, as we spoke about in our work session earlier, this is, we've, we've added this area, of course this will have to be adopted as part of the comp plan as a new opportunity area, be the next one we would study. We've been working and done a lot, almost finished downtown. So this will be the next one, will be the highest priority of ones we're working on. We'll have to add that to the comp plan.
Well, but are we doing it anytime soon, like in the next two, three weeks?
Well, I think we could, we could conceivably have a work session to preview some of these ideas with you at the meeting on the 21st, where we could have a work session to go over some of the ideas we've put together. I think that's our next, our next meeting.
And I suspect we do this, but regardless of how this committee turns out, can we, any meeting that we're going to have a work session or a public meeting where we plan to talk about planning up there, can we specifically invite the school board members that might be interested? I mean, I know it's public stuff, but I'm just saying, I think part of their deal is they want to be...
To invite one.
Public meeting, I'm just trying to be polite. I, I, I think at the end of the day, they just want to make sure we're doing this quickly and, and everyone's getting to contribute. So, you know, if we're going to have a work session where we talk about plans from there, I think it makes sense to, you know, invite the superintendent and the school board, if they want to come and participate in our process.
Absolutely, I agree with you, Annie, we should invite them, because that's the way we want to work together. We want to invite each other to things and we want it to work out well. You know, and don't forget too, there, there are probably going to be a special exception in this mix.
Oh, there will be, I'm sure.
For, for any development, it's going to be there, which is another layer of work that's got to be done, that you can't hurry, there's no way to hurry this process along. It takes a long time to design a high school, it, it's going to take time.
Not only that, I mean, I know...
There will be a site plan too.
There's that whole process and then the funding part of it. I mean, there, there's supposed to be some part of the commercial might pay for it or whatever, but, I mean, there has to be a referendum for anything related to the numbers that we've, you know, seen. And that takes a long time to plan that, you have to have on that a calendar for a long time. I mean, we're talking about planning this in the next couple of weeks, which is great, but this is a long process no matter how you approach it. I mean, hurry, hurry, hurrying up is good because we want to begin the process, but this is a long, drawn-out thing. I mean, a referendum, you couldn't even get it on this November, even, I mean, under the best, or if everybody sort of sat in a room and tried to bang out plans.
We would kind of see this in a couple of phases. First of all, we need to bring it into the city and make it part of, make it an opportunity area and then adopt some broad land use and zoning that will provide the basis for doing more advanced planning. It comes to us essentially without any planning or zoning. So it doesn't have a color on the map, it doesn't have a designation on the chart, if you will. So that's a first step, and then there would be, there may be a series of principles and ideas that we want to convey as a part of the planning process and it, it will be a somewhat iterative process. But even the area planes we have now are already planned and zoned something, and then we're proposing to make changes or adaptation. So step one would be trying to figure out what's an appropriate overall plan and zone, which doesn't get into detail of where buildings are, but we'd want to provide the right framework for future buildings, commercial development and the educational development and the open space development, so...
Well, if...
That's what we'll try to talk about on the 21st, are some of those options.
I am, I am assuaged if what Russ says is the case. If this is a long, thoughtful process that involves planning, then I'm paranoid and I have nothing to, to fear. My concern is that this comes in, in the form of proposal, here's what we're doing.
Right, well, like...
Here is the partnership we formed, here's who we've sold it to, we want the money, we want to go.
Right, well, for example, if it's for residential, that's a special exception for sure, right, so... If we zone it, we zone it B2? Sure does, you just said residential's...
Well, so, okay, if we zone it B2...
They can't build anything if you zone it, right?
Okay, well...
No, you can't.
Just so you can.
If it's B2, yes, it's a special exception. If it's, if it's a white space on the map, I, I don't think it's...
Unzoned, you can't build anything.
Can't build anything unzoned, but they could come in with a proposal saying, "This is a zoning that we want you to put there."
Well, and, and you know, one of the things, as we were talking about this...
I would rather plan it before it comes to us baked.
Absolutely, well, absolutely, and that's why, and I don't, I mean, I guess you, you, you fear that there's some secret squirrel committee already selling it to some developer, I don't know. But I, in this discussion, it did get me thinking that there, there may be developers out there unrelated to the schools who see an opportunity, who start coming up with their own plans, and it does seem like, should that happen, whether it's backed by some secret school board or just some opportunistic developer, that, you know, the more planning we've done before that occurs, the better, because otherwise it's going to be a free-for-all for, "Hey, there's this great idea," and we're like, "Yeah, but it doesn't have all these things that we wish it had." So, so that's why I think there's a lot of motivation to do this as quickly as we can.
Well, my assumption too is if someone came to staff with some type of plan, they would say, "We don't have the zoning ready, you need to wait and we'll get back to you."
Were you really concerned about that?
But, I, just to go, no, just to go back on, on the paranoia issue, I don't think you're paranoid at all, Rob.
I'm paranoid.
Having sat in a meeting recently for the new building that's going to be on Cherry Street, not told beforehand that we would not be approving the site plan change, even though they are disrupting quite a bit of that property and building addition. No, not being told that ahead of time, being told during the meeting, "Why are you asking so many questions?"
That's not true, you were misinterpreting, I talked to them afterwards. You can't have it both ways, you can't ask them to, to involve you in the planning and then complain when they involve you with the planning.
No, no, Andy, my issue was that we weren't getting a staff report told that there wasn't a site plan revision being voted on. I went into that meeting...
It was a work session, we can't vote on something in a work session.
No, I, but I thought we were doing a work session for something that was going to come before planning commission for a formal revision. I, I, because I had no staff report, I was asking questions as if we were going to do...
I know, I was there and they were not trying to get you to stop asking questions. You misinterpreted the clarification, they were trying to find out...
It seemed like twice, I'm not saying they tried to, I, it seemed like twice...
I talked to them afterwards and they said, "No, that's exactly what they wanted, they wanted to get our feedback." They clearly aimed it right below the line of the new site plan, because, because they needed it done to get the school open in the fall for the kids to go to school there.
I understand it, but that really wasn't my point. My point was what I was told afterwards by some other staff is that part of the issue was that they needed to move this quickly and they didn't want to go through a public process. So what I'm saying is, I don't believe that Mr. Meeks is being...
Seems like a reasonable, seems like a reasonable strategy to take.
I, I understand that, but I do think because it's...
It's okay with an 8,000 square foot building.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it's okay with a 40-acre site.
Well, and if, I will be the first to say that's insane if they're doing it on a giant thing like that.
But my, my problem still is I understand the need for speed, but I don't, I do believe that there should be at least one public meeting when city property, and it's, you know, or, or any school property, for any publicly owned property is being altered, there should be some public meeting in the mix, that's all I'm saying.
Wasn't that a public meeting when they were asking?
No, that was a work session.
It's a public meeting.
All right, I think, I think our, all our points have been made and, and what, what we want to do is, is pro... I think all the points have been duly noted. And what we want to do is make sure that we get the small area plan on an early, on an early meeting for us, so that at least we know what our timeline is. And then we can argue all we want during that period.
And I think we've had general acceptance of the idea that the correct approach to this is to develop a small area plan for it. In other words, have it be one small area that will be planned. And of course, there will be a need for a 2232, the location, character, general location, character, extent of a new public facility in the building, that's state law required, the planning commission involvement.
And, and I think that you should convey to the city manager or whoever's setting up this committee that we want, we would, we believe that we should have at least two commissioners on the committee, and Rob would like to see seven.
You know, I don't want to see it confrontational, but by darn it.
Do we note it?
If we're not careful, it's going to get confrontational.
Yeah, we don't want it to get confrontational.
No, I think we want, we, we want to help provide a broad constructive framework for planning and for this to be a big success for all the different things we're trying to achieve on this new property that'll be part of the city. So I, I have every confidence we can get there and...
Yeah, and just to clarify, I don't necessarily think that this proposed committee is a smart idea. All I have is the little thing they emailed over, but I would gladly have a conversation with the school board, the city council to find out what, what, what the, what a smaller committee would accomplish that we couldn't accomplish with the normal process since we're all motivated to do it quickly. So I'm all for passing that on to them, like, "Hey, let's chat about this idea, I mean, we want to get it done quickly as well." It just, I'm with you, it seems like a small committee like they've talked about is going to have troubles because we're still going to do all the stuff we're going to do anyway. And so it would either be redundant or inefficient. So I think, I do think that it is a unique situation that is going to require more coordination between the planning commission and the school board than, than has existed in the year that I've been on the planning commission. So we should figure out a structure for that, whether it's a bunch of joint work sessions or whatever. I don't think we should have the attitude that, "Hey, we're just going to plan this small area, just like we do every other one, and when we're done, we'll let you know, school board, how it turned out." But I also don't think it makes sense for them to plan it, because they're not planning.
Well, maybe if we had a committee with three planning commissioners?
Ooh.
That's less than seven.
Right, well, and that's, like I said, it could be joint work sessions, I don't know. I mean, and they, these could be informational means, whatever. I just don't want, I don't want us to come across as saying like, "Hey, we're the planners of school board, we'll let you know what we come up with." But I don't want, yeah, exactly, and I don't, I don't want them to be like, "Hey, we figured it out, we're going to put a giant condo building here and they'll build us a school in exchange for it, so let's do it." Although that sounds like a good idea.
Okay, so...
We're all, we're fortunate as a city to have this problem.
Yes, we are.
So it's, I think, a lot of good work to get to a point where we have control of the property, able to plan it and, and plot, plot out the future with the city council, the school board.
Okay, so we'll move on from the other business to the approval of the minutes of December. Okay, approval of the minutes of the 16th of December 2013.
And I have a correction for lines 580, 581, 582, which was the amended motion that we did on the Pearson Branch and Co. branch projects. And my understanding of the motion, as I remember Mr. John saying, was that the, what he wanted was the city to, to work with the owners at 211, 213, 215, to make sure that the, the best possible process happened for them, not that they were to be made whole, and we absolutely, I don't remember you ever using the word "whole," I don't know.
And I agree, I agree with you, that wasn't, that wasn't my intent.
No, I think he just wanted them to make sure that the staff worked with them and made sure that they understood clearly the process and what could be done with their land in the future.
Because that has a whole different meaning.
Yeah.
But working with is great, fine.
That's my only change. Mr. Meeks?
Well, I, I, I almost want to just turn it over to Mr. Wodisca and have him sort of clarify. I know that this is his backyard and that the, this project is probably closer to him than, than any of us, because it is literally his backyard, I'm not trying to be funny, it sounds like I'm trying to be funny, but I'm not.
It says that, he has a common property line.
He has a common property line. So there was some Roberts Rules confusion in, in the heat of battle, I think we made a mistake. So I, I think Mr. Wodisca should sort of clarify his stance on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Yeah, I wanted to clarify based on how the procedure had occurred. The way it had gone, as I viewed it, was that Mr. Meeks made an original motion, it had a second, and then a friendly amendment was proposed, which was originally rejected by, which was rejected by Mr. Meeks. And then Mr. Jean made a subsequent motion, which was voted on and passed by a margin of four to two, with myself being one of the no votes. And the reason I had voted no on Mr. Jean's motion was this piece about working with those owners. And I, and, and while, as we discuss at great length during the meeting, I feel very bad for the situation that they're in and that they could be possibly included in this, this area that would affect their, their ability to redevelop. I felt like this process had gone on long enough, that public had had, that those homeowners had had enough notice. And in short, I didn't want to limit the city's options based on the unhappiness of three residents. This is, this is a much bigger project than the three houses that unfortunately fell within the new limits. So I'm very supportive of this project and that's really what I want to be on record as saying. I think the project is terrific and, and well-designed and well-thought-out and, and as I said at the meeting, there has been a great deal of public outreach, especially to my community, which borders the Co. branch. And as president of the homeowners association, I've attended numerous meetings on this. So I'm very supportive of it and want to vote for it. And my no vote, as recorded in the minutes, was simply a result of how the vote progressed through the commission and not representative of my support of the overall project.
I would also be a strong supporter and a strong yes on this. I was opposed to selling 215 South Lee and frustrated by the fact that the person we sold it to, who agreed that he was fine with all the work that was going to be done and he saw all the work that was going to be done, had the nerve to stand up and complain about the project. So that's my no, but otherwise, I love this thing. It's a dream come true.
It is.
Another, another dream.
Like 12 years.
So... So are there-
No, this is a-
This is a biggie.
This is like the traffic light up.
Either, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Are there any further corrections to the minutes?
No.
No.
Ms. Judy, do you feel as though you've got everything that, I, I think you can, uh-
Just append it. You just append it. You just take the comments and it goes down and then it says from the last week.
He's going to be our parliamentarian from now on.
No, I shouldn't have said it.
This discussion will definitely be recorded in tonight.
Okay, good. All right. That's, that's what we need. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as, as presented and amended?
Yes, I'll move that we accept the minutes as amended.
And I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
I guess we should change the word whole, right?
Aye.
That was the amendment I made, that we're changing the word whole, right?
Whole, yes.
Absolutely.
No, you can, our whole discussion can be part of the amendment.
It's a little long, but.
No, it doesn't matter. You, you can-
Well, it will also, it will also be in this week's meeting.
Yeah, but it can be appended to this, to the current meeting. Once you approve the minutes, you can't change them. But that's, but you can change, you could, we could rewrite the entire thing.
Then how would they be the minutes?
Because they'd be the original minutes with the insertions.
Okay.
Well, I think, I thought we could only correct motions personally.
No, you can, you can. That's why you approve the minutes. You can not approve the minutes if you don't like the substance of the changes that were made.
Okay, so we have, we have approved the minutes as amended.
Just me.
I abstained because I wasn't there.
You, were you abst-
See what you missed? Again?
Yes, again. I was not there.
You're today.
You're today.
We, we noticed that. Okay. Are there any planning commission reports?
Should we say aye that we?
Yes, I thought we did. All those in favor, yes, we did. Planning commission reports?
Only thing with the EDA, they're coming forth with a proposal for land banking that they're going to consider again tomorrow night. It's the last, they had, the initial proposal came forth the last meeting in December. And so, and I think there's still some considerations as to what kind of money they're going to have from the settlement. I don't think they really didn't know the last time around. But have you seen the proposal, Jim?
I saw an earlier version. I think you alerted me to it.
Rob, here. Well, there's a, take another look at it. There's a new one. I mean, it's, it's, it's basically the same.
And it's, it's mostly a policy. It's not like we're going to specifically go buy this because they don't know what funds they have.
No, but, well, they're, they do think that they should have some money out of the Paladine site sale. And, but they do, ever since with their retreat, when they didn't have land banking on it, and I said, Mike, we need to, you need to put land banking on there. Which of course goes right along with our planning and area plans and stuff like that to make sure that we've got that possibility so that we don't lose valuable pieces of property that we want in an area. But anyway, I'll let you know how it comes out.
Okay, thank you. Jim, do you have a planning directors' report?
Yes, briefly. First, I wanted to thank the commission for your hard work during the last year. Enjoyed working with you, as has the staff. I think a lot got accomplished and, as evidenced in the annual report and look forward to working with you on a lot of important things this coming year. We are going to be putting together budgets soon for the city manager. We did have a, a lot of activity this year and we're over budget in terms of revenue coming forward in through the process, through the city, beyond what was budgeted. We were budgeting conservatively. I think we are going to need, you know, additional people to keep up with the city work, particularly on the building plan review and inspections. We now have two new schools, which previously were Fairfax County. If we have development up there, we're going to have a lot of, of need. I was on a walking tour of North Gate as it's under construction last Friday. These buildings, before all the drywall is completed, and Rob, you probably are aware of this, they're very complex. And Mr. DeJean is aware of this, when you, the systems that are now in modern buildings from fire safety to every unit being, having its own electrical service, et cetera. There's an incredible amount of detail that goes into them. And our building safety group, which you don't interface that much with, has been doing a really excellent job. But they both review the plans and inspect the buildings. And as we have projects come forward, the two big ones that were approved, the new grocery store at Eastern, at Eden Center and others, we simply are going to run out of capacity to handle that. Plus, we have a building boom going on in the residential part of the city. So we're going to need more people to handle that. They need space. We also are trying to make progress on the comp plan, still trying to recruit and find people to fill vacant positions. But we also have space issues in terms of where do we locate people. So there's some challenges ahead. I'm sure we'll meet them, but certainly appreciate your support this past year and look forward to it next year. And again, I think we did a lot of really good work last year and I think we can do some more good things for the city this coming year. So just wanted to give you my personal thanks for you all being a pleasure to work with and being very productive and all the time and effort you put in for the city.
Well, thank you too, Jim. Certainly have put in a lot of time yourself. What about, what about a new copy machine to put in your book?
We will relay your concerns about that. And also, I think you also mentioned some commissioners had some interest in having electronic, ability to have electronic copies of things as opposed to needing paper. So we'll, we'll also be working on that with, I have identified that city manager as one of your issues and one of our interests. We will also be closing the office, I think I mentioned this in a work session. The counter and the building safety folks, one day a week, one day a month, the last Wednesday of the month, which is the day that's most crowded here at city hall because of court day. So that we can finish it, do our monthly report, do inventory for the month filing, catch up on plans that need additional work. We'll be open for internal customers. We think this will help us be more efficient. It also gives us a chance to actually have staff meetings with the building safety and zoning and counter staff, which presently they're so busy, you never really can close things down to sit and talk and do staff development. It's very important to do training, keep up with things. I'm also working with the planners. We're going to try to have a, once a month, staff development kind of day where we try to look beyond foster to see what are best practices, are there things we should be looking at and seeing? I don't want us to be parochial. We need to, you know, learn from our neighbors and from area, things going on around us. So we'll try to provide that information to you as well and try to share more information with you. And if you see or hear about interesting things, we'd love to know about them as well.
Thank you. If there are no, no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
A second.
Motion is adjourned. I mean, the, the meeting is adjourned. The motion carries.